Welcome to the February the 4th, 2020 Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meetings in the Council Chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma at 7:00 PM. This evening, we will welcome my invocation to be given by Pastor Kurt Mulling of the First United Methodist Church here in Yukon, my favorite place. And following our invocation, we will have the flag salutes. Pastor Kurt.
Ordinarily, I get to preach to Mr. Mayor McCarron, and tonight's going to be reversed, right? Let's pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for the gift of this day, for the gift of life. We give you thanks for your love that always surrounds us, your presence that's always near. And we give you thanks too for the privilege of living in this free land. We don't take that for granted. We give you thanks for the opportunity to live in this community. And we pray, God, that through the work of the mayor, the council persons, all the staff of the city, and through members of the community, we may all strive to be a community where everyone is cared for, where everyone has an opportunity to grow and achieve and become. So we just pray for your grace and wisdom for us as we gather and go about the business of this community, that it might be one that is the best we can achieve through your grace. So be with our leaders as we do this business. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Kurt. Roll call, please.
McCarron.
Here.
Yonda.
Here.
Kachini.
Here.
Selby.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
This evening, we have a presentation on Children's Dental Health Month, and I have a proclamation I'll read, and Dr. David Deason is here to accept that on behalf of the dental health of our children.
Whereas the future is to a large measure dependent on the good health of our children, youth, and the citizens of tomorrow, and whereas good health, physical and mental, can be achieved through good health habits learned early. Now therefore, I, Michael McCarron, mayor of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2020 as Children's Dental Health Month in the city of Yukon and urge all of our citizens and all our community organizations to join the observance given under my hand and seal of the city of Yukon this fourth day of February 2020. And I'm going to hand the microphone over to Dr. David Deason, who has been a part of this program for a long time.
Dr. Deason. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a real privilege to get to speak to you guys and kind of brag on our Yukon dentist. This is the 46th year that we've been into the school system and visited elementary students. We started with third graders 46 years ago, and we did that because Chris kind of helped us give them some toothbrushes. They kind of decided we're going to do first graders, so for two years in a row, we had to do third graders and first graders to get everybody as they came through. Today, in Yukon and Piedmont, we saw over 1,300 first graders and special ed kids. That puts our total well over 30,000 students that we've seen over the 46 years. The second program that our dentist or dentist mayor that I'm really proud of is called Give Kids a Smile. And what we do with that is each of the dentists sign up, and on a rotating basis, we will take in a needy child to do free dental work for them. This year, I have trouble getting my dentist to turn it all in, but the ones that did turn it in this year, we had like $18,000 worth of free work just this year. And we've been doing that for over 20 years now. So it's been a program that I'm proud of, and I'm proud our dentists all take part in it, and I thank Yukon for standing behind us and honoring this month. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like for everybody to stand up and applaud Dr. Deason. He has been a pioneer in this project. Ladies and gentlemen, Deason, like, special.
Good job. The next section we have here is our visitors' section. This section of the proceedings is for visitors who would like to address the Yukon City Council on a non-agended item. Each person will be given three minutes to address the council, and by open meeting rules, no discussion will take place. Do we have anyone here this evening who wishes to address the council? And I do have a sheet from one person, and that will be Mr. Mark. And is that Mars? Mr. Mars, you want to start, please, sir?
Can I come up here?
Sure, no, sir. We want you to come up here and give us, once again, your name and address for the video record.
My name is Mark Mars. I live at 1617 Castle Rock Road, 73099, but you know that. My concern is on the water bill. Anytime you go for 3,000 gallons, your garbage goes from $546 to $18 and change. And I don't know if the 3,000 gallons is based on 30 days, but if it is, for instance, my bill was 34 days, 3,400 gallons. And I'm thinking, I use 100 gallons a day, but yet I'm going to pay another $13. Now, I don't know if that's one size fits all. If the same person who has 5,000 gallons is charged the extra $13.33, can we not flag it somewhere in a computer system if you use 100 gallons a day or less, that you don't pay the extra $13.33? And, you know, I've talked to Donna and Jeff, and I've been in Jim's office a few times, so I just don't know where to go. I went in yesterday, and they just kind of said, oh, we'll take you back to 546, but we're going to take the 400 gallons off your bill, but next month, we got to add it back in. So one way or the other, I'm going to pay that extra. So is it based on 100 gallons a day? And why can't it be prorated if you go 200 gallons over or 300? I mean, I'll pay it if I go over 100. Well, I pay it anyhow, but if I go over 100 gallons a day, yeah, I don't have anything to fuss about. So I'd just like it to be looked into and get some kind of explanation as how that's based, and can we not get a software system that would take the residents and say 3,800 gallons for 38 days? Because last month was 28 days and 2,800 gallons. So I just don't know where to go, because they basically told me yesterday, don't come back in. We don't want to hear from you again. It didn't set real well. Anyhow, if somebody can get back to me, I'd like to know how that actually works and if we can do something about it. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Proceeding on, we will now recess as the Yukon City Council and convene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A on the municipal authority agenda is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can approve those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of January the 21st, 2020; B) payment of material claims in the amount of $19,562.04. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accepted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Selby.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 on the council agenda is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) minutes of the regular meeting of January the 21st, 2020; B) payment of material claims in the amount of $906,750.53; C) designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D) denial of claim number 207467-LR from Darren Jolliff for equipment damage as recommended by the Oklahoma Mutual Assurance Group; E) extending the city's guarantee to the Yukon BMX loan, it's a BMX loan, oh, through February the 5th, 2021, and that is Resolution 2017-03; F) setting the date for the next regular council meeting for February the 18th, 2020, 7:00 PM in the council chambers, the Centennial Building of 12 South 5th Street. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on any of these items? Seeing none, vote please.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. Item 2, reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Crosby, do we have any reports this evening?
No, it's saving, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3, consider approving the preliminary plat for Brighton Business Park, 1508 and 1516 Commerce Street, as recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
May we have an opportunity to present the case?
Sure. This is, and give us your name and address, please.
Sure.
For the record.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I'm an attorney here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Mark Grubbs, who's a civil engineer. This is a preliminary plat for approximately 3.44 acres. That is recommended for denial by Planning Commission. I was not at the Planning Commission. I've read the minutes. I can't speak to why the Planning Commission voted against it, but I want to talk briefly about plating and what we're doing when we're looking at plats. Unlike zoning, where the city is granted broad discretion to make its decisions, when we look at plating, that discretion is more limited. What you're really asking is, does this particular application conform to your zoning ordinance and your subdivision regulations? Here, the answer is unequivocally yes. Staff recommends approval for that reason. There was some discussion by a protester at the Planning Commission that we're taking two lots and converting it to six. So I want to make sure that the council is aware that we could go pull building permits for six buildings and build this exactly as we're planning right now without plating. So denying the plat does not stop this development from moving forward. What the plat will allow is this particular landowner to subdivide the land and sell these lots individually. There was a discussion about brick, and talking to various members of city staff, we will agree to brick these. I don't think that that is something that could possibly be required in the plating process, because your zoning ordinances and your building code ordinances lay out what is required. But in an effort to accomplish this and get this done, my client is willing to accept the requirement that these buildings be bricked.
On all sides, not just the front?
Yes.
All sides.
All sides. So if we think about what we're doing here, we're looking at our subdivision regulations and our zoning ordinances. As I said, your staff has recommended approval only because we comply with all of the ordinances and subdivision regulations that the city of Yukon has set out for development. So if a developer cannot rely on those in developing within the city of Yukon, what can a developer rely on? I want to read real briefly the purpose and intent section of your subdivision regulations. The provisions of this ordinance are specifically designed to lessen the congestion on streets, promote the orderly layout and use of land, secure safety from fire and other dangers, provide adequate light and air, facilitate adequate provisions for transportation, water, sewerage, schools, parks, playgrounds, and other public requirements, and protect neighborhood areas from the hazards through traffic. So what staff is saying by recommending approval is that we meet to a T the purpose and intent and all provisions contained within the subdivision regulations. Finally, I'm going to leave you with a Supreme Court case from the state of Oklahoma entitled Kelly versus City of Bethany. And what the Supreme Court tells us in a plat case is, it has long been a breach of the 14th Amendment to empower a city at its absolute and unrestrained discretion to give or withhold permission to a proprietor to use his property in any lawful manner in compliance with zoning ordinances and other reasonable legislative requirements. Well, those zoning ordinances and other reasonable legislative requirements are your subdivision regulations and your zoning ordinance, all of which we fully comply with. So what we're asking for is you approve this plat and allow this particular developer to subdivide this property in a manner consistent and contemplated within the framework of the city of Yukon. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I know you don't know what they're going to sell, who they're going to sell these plats to, but what about parking?
Whatever your code requires is what we'll have to meet.
So you don't know how many parking spaces there will be?
Well, no, because what your code contemplates is whatever the use is will require a certain level of parking. And so this discussion has nothing to do with use whatsoever. That will be a function of the building code. When we come in for a building permit, we'll have to show what the use is, and your code will have a percentage or calculation of what is required for that particular use.
But there'll be adequate space for the parking?
Oh, 100%. There are no variances requested whatsoever in this plat.
Okay. As long as it's bricked on all sides, I can go along with it.
Do we need to add that into it, or is that just a third?
Well, that'll become a part of the minutes.
Sure. We can put it as a plat now.
And I assume it is not on the current preliminary plat. Is that correct?
Right. So it can be a part of the minutes, put it as a plat note, whatever the city attorney would like when it comes in for a final plat, it'll have to reflect that.
Well, yeah, we still have a final plat to go, so that's the secondary part. We can make sure that all of that exists at that time.
Will there be a drawing prior to, so that we can see exactly what it's going to look like?
Drawing, like the buildings?
With the brick.
Whatever the staff would require in terms of a building permit. I mean, it won't formally, zoning is done, so it will not formally come back to this body.
No, I know that, yes.
But, yeah, staff will be provided, I assume, elevations or whatever they are required to see to show that we meet building code, as well as now this new plat note.
Well, the other side as well is, it will come back to us as a final plat.
As a plat, yes, but not the building design.
That's correct. Okay.
I appreciate your willingness to make concessions in order to keep the residents, those are very nice homes, and to keep it in.
Sure.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Box.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, vote please. Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, what was the motion?
The motion is that we are going to accept.
The plat.
Yeah.
Okay.
It just said it's recommended for denial.
I just wanted to make, right.
We do not deny.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. We accept it.
And the final plat will include the notation on the brick.
The brick.
That's correct, yeah. Shelley's motion, just so you know, was for approval when she said that, okay? Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate your time. Item 4, consider approving an expenditure funds totaling $26,606 with construction by Brewer Construction Oklahoma under the 2020 Concrete and Asphalt Paving Drainage, Water, and Sewer Project Contract based on the equivalent of the 2017 Concrete and Asphalt Paving Drainage, Water, and Sewer Contract for the Taylor Park Storm Sewer Replacement as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accepted.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Mr. Horton, you want to comment? Is this the stuff that, this is all the things that got damaged or whatever and that we're replacing out there?
Well, actually, this is the road that goes back into the BMX track.
That goes all, okay, it goes to the back.
There's a narrow spot that has a current drainage underneath the road. It's very narrow. It's kind of dangerous, so what we're trying to do is widen that out.
Is that right there where those trees are?
That's correct.
As you go to the back half?
So what we're trying to do is widen it out and make it safer and let two cars pass each other as they go back and forth to the west.
Okay, so you're going to widen that out in essence then?
Yes.
And we'll put some head walls.
Yes, there'll be head walls on it.
South, right.
Right. I'm familiar with trying to drive back there, so. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Yonda.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
McCarron.
Okay. Item 5, consider.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can you vote on item 4, please?
We just voted on, oh, I didn't.
You did not.
I said yes.
No.
I didn't say yes. I said yes.
In your head, Mr. Mayor.
Hard time. Item 5, consider approving ordinance 1400, an ordinance granting One Gas Inc., acting by and through its Oklahoma Natural Gas Division, Natural Gas Company Division, and its successors and assigns for a period of 25 years from approval and acceptance of this ordinance, a non-exclusive franchise and right to enter the public ways to install, operate, and maintain a distribution system within a long, across, under, over, and under the public ways of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma for the transportation, distribution, and/or sale of gas to consumers and the public generally in the city, defining the words and phrases therein, providing for assignment, sale, or lease of the franchise, providing that the city may enact an ordinance charging persons transporting gas through the guaranteed distribution system a fee on a calculated value of such transported gas, providing for the use and the repair of public ways, providing for the regulation of service, establishing depth of pipelines, establishing rights and duties of the movement and alteration of the pipelines, providing for indemnification of the city of Yukon, providing for guarantees, rules, and regulations, providing for inspection of guarantees records, requiring the guarantee or the grantee to pay the franchise fee, providing for conditions of the franchise, providing for construction of this ordinance upon the invalidity of any part thereof, providing for the submission of this ordinance to an election of qualified voters of the city, providing for the acceptance of this franchise by the guarantee and both an effective and an operative date thereof, repealing all other ordinances directly in conflict herewith, and providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accepted.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this issue?
Could we just have Jim tell us the reasoning for this?
Yeah. Would you like to comment, Mr. Crosby?
I'm going to mount.
I'm sorry.
Just on why we're doing this.
Well, the main reason we're doing this item, and it's kind of interesting, is that we're operating presently under a 1942 agreement, and this does not stipulate anything about the rights and rules on indemnification of the city in case of an accident, the problems with dealing with the grant of the franchise to determine the assignment, sale, or lease of that franchise, the rights they have to enter the public right of way, the rights of us to require them certain standards for construction. And in the 1942 agreement, which we're operating under, it's very interesting that it's so outdated, many of the things it talks about, this 2% tax that is levied on the people at this time, that was done in 1942, that failure to pay that, they could be removed from the city. And that's all it addresses, and several things in there, and it's something that, of course, we cannot do, and it really doesn't stipulate any of the requirements. And it's very important that we understand that when they come in here and they do work, and they work in our right of way, that we can control what they do, and if parts need to be removed, we can require it of them, and it's for the safety and welfare of our community.
Okay, is this where we look at the options there and make a motion? So I'd like to have a motion on the percentage. The original was 2%. So.
I think if this passes, as it states, Mr. Attorney, there's 2%, unless we change it under special ordinance.
It's blank right now, so you can fill in 2% or 3%, whatever percentage the council would like to have.
There's no blank on this ordinance right here, I saw.
There is a blank.
Is there a blank further in it on the item? And I think we need to make a motion for 2%.
It should be a blank so the council can decide what percentage it wants.
Okay. So we'll entertain a motion for 2%.
That would be an amendment to the motion, sir.
Amending the motion.
Yes.
What are other cities doing? Just 2%?
Most of them are 3%.
And that's what the ONG people.
It's what they propose.
Proposed, and I feel like as a city that we don't want to inflict any more additional taxes, and so staying at 2% or lower is more ideal than going with 3% and creating a tax charge.
So I'm waiting for an amendment.
Motion?
A motion?
Motion to accept the 2%.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to amend the item. Item 5, to contain the term 2% as the rate. Is that as an amendment to the motion? Mr. Attorney, do we vote on that just on the motion now, or?
You can vote on the motion with the attachment or the amendment attached to it.
Okay. So.
The amendment we have to pass first.
I'm sorry.
We need to have some discussion again.
Well, if the amendment, if the motion passes, the amendment's already attached to it.
Okay.
Okay.
But we don't need to vote on the amendment first. That's the, just, okay. So this vote then will mean that we will pass or fail item 5 with the amendment as proposed at 2%.
Yes.
All right. So, Mr. She, vote please.
Do we need discussion since we amended?
No, not on that.
We have a second, I believe, isn't it?
Well, we have a motion and a second. We're still, we're not closed. We haven't started voting yet, but what other?
I just didn't know if we had any discussions, Mr. Witten.
That's, that was just you and Mr. Kachini talking when you said the, oh, okay.
I was asking, is there any other discussion?
Oh, no, that's what I, yeah.
Mr. Witten?
So my question is, the 2%, 3%, the taxpayers pay that?
Yes, that's correct.
And it goes back to the city?
Right.
Okay.
It's been at 2% since 1942.
Right.
1942, okay.
So how many of your taxes have not gone up since 1942? Is there any further discussion, sir? No other discussion, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
No.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item five A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance fourteen hundred. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the emergency clause? Seeing none, vote please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
No.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item six, consider approving Resolution twenty twenty dash zero one, a resolution calling for a special election of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, on the seventh day of April, 2020, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the city of Yukon the question of whether an ordinance granting a franchise to One Gas Inc. acting through its Oklahoma Natural Gas Division for the purpose of selling, transmitting, and distributing natural gas in the city of Yukon shall be approved, authorizing the mayor to call an election by proclamation and requesting the Canadian County Election Board to conduct the election. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Wooten?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Okay. New business. Is there any today, Mr. Schivers?
None denied, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel discussion. Councilwoman Shelby, I think I started the other time, yeah, I switch ends every.
Thank you. I just like to say thank you to Dr. Deason and all the other dentists for their work that they do in our community. It's a wonderful service. Also, want to thank the Transportation Department and our city crews in advance for what's going to go on tonight, and the fact that our city is already ready and prepared. Thank you, I appreciate that. Be kind to one another and make the most of your tomorrow.
Mr. Kachini? Well, I was going to thank Dr. Deason, but I don't see him, but he's done an outstanding job. I remember when I first came into this community, he was one of the first ones I met, and he's the first one that really tried to help me adjust to this new community. And I also want to thank the city for the continuous support for the veterans of this community. Councilman Wooten?
I'd just say that I attended the daddy-daughter dance, and it was amazing. It was a great time.
That was your last chance?
Actually, I got one more year.
One more year?
One more year, so that'll be awesome. Took her out to a steak dinner, we had fun. Also, next Tuesday is the Ward Four election. We've got a couple of candidates, so if you're in Ward Four, I recommend you get out there and vote. And that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Yonda?
Well, I also want to thank Dr. Deason and all the dentists who provide services and their time for our children's dental care, and also, we had a great chocolate festival on Saturday. I think they had a record attendance, so if you missed it, you missed a big event, so make sure to make plans to be there next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Forty-six years, pretty special, folks, you know, that we've had people here that care about our community and take care of our youth and our kids, and I think it's pretty special. I could not have been more pleased. I've had the opportunity to do three of those with Dr. Deason, and he's been a good friend for many years, so he's one of the folks that I truly appreciate a lot. Upcoming Saturday, March the seventh, is the Kids' Annual Trout Fish Out at the Dale Robertson Center Pond out at Route sixty-six in Yukon Parkway, eight to eleven. Adults must be accompanied by a child, and they will award prizes, and it's usually a pretty good time by all. Saturday, March the twenty-sixth, is the Twenty-First Annual Taste of Yukon at the Dale Robertson Center, five thirty to seven thirty. It's fifteen dollars in advance, seventeen on the day, and it gives you an opportunity to come up for over twenty-four different vendors who are bringing their wares and sample a lot of the local restaurants that you might go, not go to otherwise. And with that.
We just make an announcement to some of the kids, if you have not heard, Yukon Schools is out tomorrow in anticipation of our.
Yeah. I think we.
Those that are Bethany or Southwest having it or out also.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Shelley. Yeah, how, you want to say, we'll say it again, for Yukon Schools, I think, has already announced that they are out tomorrow, and likewise, Southwest Covenant and.
Bethany, Piedmont, Mustang.
So.
The Metro Schools.
Must have been such a good year, they've got a few extra snow days, so.
Well, let me ask you something, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I was supposed to substitute at the high school tomorrow, so I don't get paid down, or do I?
You need to show up.
Well, it doesn't matter, you won't even show up, so, you know. Your wife won't give you the keys again, you know. So, once again, seeing no other business before the council this evening, this meeting is adjourned.